President.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Redfield.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Present.
Commissioner Wright, can you lead us in the salute to the flag?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on your God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on any item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item number or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members may also participate via Zoom or the dial-in option. The phone number for that is on the screen. Once the chair has announced the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone, then press star six to unmute yourself. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching, such as Channel 26 or the live stream. And then, public meetings are a limited public forum, so that means that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, I will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout the warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So with that, we will move to administrative business. I do not have items for administrative business. Do we have anybody on the phone who wishes to speak on administrative business?
We have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, I will close public comment on administrative business, bring it back to the commission. Would someone like to approve the order of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as noted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Let's please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We do not have minutes to approve, nor do we have a designation of liaison. Any changes to that, Director Murdock?
No, Chair, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we will go into oral communications. This portion of the agenda is for items that are not on the agenda, and it's for the public to address any items that fall into that category. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to speak. I have one oral communications card from Suzanne Moore. Suzanne, you may come up.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. Suzanne Moore from the Manor, Sitting Board Member for the County's Healthcare for the Homeless and Farm Workers Program, speaking for myself this evening. You may be aware that the county's executive summary for the homeless count is out. And recently, Dr. Margaret Kuschel, Division Chief for UCSF Center for the Vulnerable Populations, spoke as a panelist for Mark Berman. I wanted to share what we learned. In spite of significant effort by our county, homelessness numbers have increased. Dr. Kuschel estimates that for every person housed, two new homeless join the unhoused ranks. Two forces are at play causing homelessness: lack of affordable housing and poverty. Pacifica has the dubious honor of having the highest per capita number of homeless in the county. Over 75% of Pacifica's unhoused were priced out of their homes here. Our homeless are Pacificans, and they are our neighbors. Dr. Kuschel offers further alarming data. The average age of our homeless is increasing. About 48% are now over the age of 50, and of those, 41% have never been homeless before. I recently reviewed literature on homeless displacement, and literature clearly warns that displacement is a high-risk event associated with an increased risk of both morbidity and mortality for those displaced. As our community moves forward with programs, we must take into serious consideration the impact on our homeless community. I'm grateful for the work of our homeless outreach team, but our city also needs to step forward to assure that this vulnerable population receives adequate notice, is aware of existing options, and has provided assistance toward permanent housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay. I do not have other speaker cards for oral communications at this time. Seeing Roland come with a speaker card, so I'm gonna reserve. It's an agendized item, okay. So moving to Zoom or the dial-in opportunity, reminder to press star nine to raise your hand for oral communications.
We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. So then, with that, I will close oral communications and move on to items which there are none. And that brings us to new public hearings. So the first item is file number 2024-018, Annual Review of Site Development Permit PSD 792-15, Coastal Development Permit CDP 349-15, Tentative Subdivision Map SUB 225-15, and Sign Permit S-113-15 for a four-room motel development known as Anchor Inn. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Caitlin Snodgrass, Assistant Planner with the Planning Department. Tonight, I'm presenting to you the annual review of a four-room motel development known as Anchor Inn located at 500 San Pedro Avenue within the Pedro Point neighborhood. The Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 940 approving the development on February 16, 2016. Condition of Approval Number 56 requires an annual review of the permits commencing one year from the date of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, which was issued on January 13, 2020. The annual review was conducted from January 2020 to January 2021 as specified in the condition. The annual review has been deferred due to COVID-19-related circumstances. Planning staff verified with building, engineering, wastewater, fire, and the North Coast County Water District to confirm whether the operator is in compliance with all conditions placed on the permit. Staff verified that the existing site conditions remain compliant with the original approval during a site inspection on May 3, 2024. Due to the business's structure of operating with an off-site manager, the Planning Commission had safety and security concerns with the site. Police Captain Glasgow and Senior Code Enforcement Officer Gwen White did not identify any incidences or code enforcement complaints directly related to the subject site between the dates of January 2020 and January 2021. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission finds that annual review is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, finds that the operation of the four-unit motel development known as Anchor Inn at 500 San Pedro Avenue is substantially in accord with Site Development Permit PSD 792-15, Coastal Development Permit CDP-349-15, Tentative Subdivision Map SUB-225-15, and Sign Permit S-113-15, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you. So before I go to Commissioner questions, is the owner-operator here, and did they wish to make a presentation?
They're here for questions.
Okay, thank you. Do Commissioners have questions for staff? No? Commissioner?
I had one question. There's a letter at the end of the packet regarding some tree issues. Have those, can the property managers speak to that more in-depth?
I think at this point, we should defer those questions to staff, and then we could ask the property owner if there are.
Good evening, Commissioners. Planning Director Christian Murdock. I can just say in regards to that statement in the applicant's letter that's attached to the staff report, we did follow up with the Public Works Department, and their Field Services Division staff confirmed those trees are on private property, and so they're not city trees that would require maintenance at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for staff? That was actually my question as well, so. All right. Commissioner Redfield, would you like to re-ask that question to the applicant?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So with that, we will open public comment. I have one card that says Sterling Avenue, Pedro Point, which I believe is for item two, the Olympian. Yeah, I think that's for Olympian Way. Are there any other speaker cards? Okay. Do we have anybody on the phone or on Zoom that would like to speak on this item?
We don't have any raised hands.
So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation or a motion. Well, I think it's nice to get one of these reports where everything is noted as compliant, so I don't know if there needs to be much deliberation. Vice Chair Ferguson, did you want to say something?
No, I don't recall ever conducting an annual review like this, but everything was compliant or a deleted condition of approval, so if nobody else has any comments, I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
One second. I move to adopt the attached resolution, implying the annual review is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and find that the operation of the four-unit motel development known as Anchor Inn at 500 San Pedro Avenue, assesses parcel number 023-073-220, is substantially in accord with the Site Development Permit PSD-792-15, Coastal Development Permit CDP 349-15, Tentative Subdivision Map SUB-225-15, and Sign Permit S-113-15, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
So before I ask for a second, I'm just gonna check in with staff. Are we okay to continue?
We're okay, thank you. There was some confusion over whether it was for this item or not, but we've forgotten it.
Okay, thank you. May I have a, or is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. And so that will take us to file number, item number two, file number 2024-016, Coastal Development Permit CDP 463-24, and Tree Permit TP-9-24 for construction of a 312 square foot two-story addition, 88 square foot deck, 57 square foot front porch, 312 square foot single car garage addition, and renovation of an existing 1,076 square foot single-family residence located at 315 Olympian Way. May we have a staff report for item number two, please?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name's Stephanie Sidovantis, Senior Planner with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting item number two on tonight's agenda. The project's site is located at 315 Olympian Way. The site has a 2040 general plan land use designation of low-density residential, a 1980 local coastal land use plan of low-density residential, and a zoning designation of single-family residential and coastal zone combining district. The site is surrounded by single-family residences of one and two stories. The site previously received Planning Commission approval for the same scope of work in spring of 2023. However, that coastal development permit has expired. The site currently has a two-story, single-family residence with a one-car garage. There are no protected trees on site, however, there is a protected tree within 50 feet of the project's site on the abutting lot. The project proposal includes expansion of the existing garage to allow for two cars in a tandem configuration, an expansion to the second story to increase the living room, kitchen, and add a dining room and laundry room, a new covered front porch, and expansion to the existing deck at the rear of the residence. This is the same scope of work that was previously approved last year. This is the site plan of the project, showing where the addition is proposed and where the location of the protected tree is on the property next door as well. These exhibits show the first floor and second floor proposed addition. As you can see on the first floor, it does expand the existing garage to allow for that two-car tandem configuration. The second story adds the new living room, the dining room, and the laundry room as well. The project is consistent with the local coastal program and the zoning ordinance requirements. The project submitted an arborist report, which indicated protective measures that will be in place during the construction phase of the project to protect the existing tree. The project will have no negative effects on coastal resources and would not create any negative neighborhood impacts. For these reasons, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approve Coastal Development Permit CDP 463-24, and Tree Permit TP-9-24 by adopting the resolution including conditions of approval in Exhibit A and incorporating all maps and testimony into the record by reference. Thank you. I'm available for question, and the property owner, Carol Pan, is also present to respond to any questions.
Thank you. But to clarify, it's just if questions are asked. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions for staff? Okay. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? Okay, so then I am going to open the public hearing. I believe I do have a speaker card from Sean Ramsey. Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'm assuming that's not on the agenda for tonight.
That's correct. It sounds like there may have been another notice also posted on the street.
Okay, Mr. Ramsey, I'm gonna assume that you don't want to speak on this item. Okay, thank you. All right. So I do not have speaker cards for this item. Does anyone on Zoom or the phone wish to speak? Reminder to press star nine if dialing in or the raise-hand function in Zoom.
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Does anyone wish to comment? Okay. I, for one, think that this is a pretty simple item. I appreciate that there's a large tree protection zone, but I also see that that cut is existing, so I don't think that there's much more that we could ask, and I appreciate that an arborist report was performed. So unless anyone disagrees, I would be willing to entertain a motion.
Yeah, because I have a quick comment. I'm just gonna commend the applicant on an excellent proposal, what looks like a very nice project, and staff for reading through the conditions of approval. It seems like we've really dialed in our Olympian Way conditions. So questions are diminishing. All the things I'd normally look for are already included, so appreciate that.
Would you like to make a motion with that comment?
Sure, why not? Be the motion person. I move that the Planning Commission finds the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves the Coastal Development Permit CDP-463-24, and Tree Permit TP-9-24 by adopting the attached resolution, including the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Can we have a vote?
Looks like we're waiting for one more vote button. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that brings us to new public hearing number three, file number 2023-019, Coastal Development Permit CDP-455-23, and Tree Permit TP-8-24 to construct bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the public right-of-way on Palmetto Avenue from West Line Drive to Espinon Avenue, Espinon Avenue from Palmetto Avenue to West Avalon Drive, West Avalon Drive from Espinon Avenue to Palmetto Avenue, and Palmetto Avenue from West Avalon Drive to Paloma Avenue. I feel like that was a tongue twister. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Stephanie Sidovantis again, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. I am also, will be joined soon with by Consultant Engineer Sean Rose, that will be here to assist me with this presentation. This is a coastal development permit and tree permit for implementation of specific improvements related to the city's 2020 bicycle and pedestrian master plan. The project includes work within the existing public right-of-way, and I know Chair Hauser just said this, but I'll repeat it again for the public. The project includes work within the existing public right-of-way on Palmetto Avenue from West Line Drive to Espinon Avenue, and West Avalon Drive to Paloma Avenue, and on Espinon Avenue from Palmetto Avenue to West Avalon Drive. As you can see from this slide here, it extends from north to south, from West Line all the way to Paloma, essentially entering the Sharp Park neighborhood. The project includes new enhancements to bicycle lanes and new pedestrian facilities, including crosswalks throughout the entire stretch. And I will hand it over to Mr. Rose now, that will tell some of those specific improvements.
Great, thank you, Stephanie. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So my name is Sean Rose. I'm retained by the City of Pacifica to manage this project. I'm just gonna walk through some of the improvements that are planned, and I'll just walk through using this slide. So as Stephanie mentioned, there's a number of pedestrian and bike improvements that are part of the project. All of the elements in the project were envisioned in the city's bike and ped master plan, which was a very extensive outreach effort, pop-up events, community farmers' markets, public meetings that were held to determine, excuse me, a lot of different improvements around the City of Pacifica. The project budget for this project is $940,000. The vast majority of that are from grant funds. SAM Trans Measure AW Bike Ped Funds funds the majority of the project. Project also has a grant from the State of California and TDA Article III, and then, as I mentioned, there's a small amount of city funds in the project as well as a local match. One thing to point out is that in the delivery of this project, the city has to keep in mind is that those grant funds expire in August of next year, so the project has to be at a point where those funds can be billed by that date. All the work that we're talking about here tonight is in the public right-of-way within the street itself, and to the extent that it's in the sidewalk, it's still within the public right-of-way, which extends behind the sidewalk. The bicycle improvements is a little more detailed to what Stephanie mentioned. There are Class II dedicated bike lanes, and those are not shared facilities, so they're striped and indicated as dedicated bike facilities. The Class II B, and the only difference between Class II and Class II B is that the Class II B has a buffer giving a little distance between the bike lane and the vehicle lanes. So that can be just striping, it can be vertical delineators, there can be a number of things that you can put between the bike lane and the vehicle lane as a buffer. Class III shared bike lanes, which are just really stencils on the roadway, striping and stencils and signage that indicate that the road is to be shared with bikes, and then Class III B, which are a little less common but becoming more and more common, where you're still sharing the vehicle lane with the, bikes and cars are still sharing the vehicle lane. However, there are traffic calming elements incorporated into the bike route, Class III bike route, such as bowl bouts, or there could be raised features, anything that, or changing the vehicle lanes, there's any number of things, or it could be speed signs, anything that serves to calm traffic at the same time as you're indicating that it's a shared bike facility. There are also pedestrian accessibility improvements on the project. There are new and improved crosswalks at nine intersections on this project. And again, this project goes a very significant distance, all the way from Palmetto West Line in the north, all the way down Palmetto to Espinon, Espinon all the way back to Palmetto, and then all the way to Paloma on Palmetto. And within that stretch, there are, as I mentioned, nine intersections where crosswalks are being improved. There are also 10 new curb ramps going in at intersections that have non-ADA compliant curb ramps. We're replacing those with ADA-compliant curb ramps. We're also doing paving throughout most of the project limit. We're gonna be doing road repaving. The type of treatment varies, but we'll be repaving the surface, partly because we were gonna be doing that anyway because of the condition of the road, partly because this is an opportunity now with increased bike use and pedestrian use, just to improve the surface of the street while we're at it. Since we're gonna be striping, it also gives a new surface which to stripe on, so the strapping will be more visible. We're gonna be removing 94 parking spaces as part of the project. The vast majority of those are in the northern section of the project, between West Line, on Palmetto, between West Line and Espinon. And if you go, Stephanie, maybe to that before we go to the next item, if you could go to the exhibit that shows that or that area. So this is the northern limit. That crosswalk at the top there is the new crosswalk we're putting across West Line at Palmetto. And then if you, what you can see there is that in the downhill direction, which is left to right in this photo, and obviously the beach is in front of it in the foreground, as you're going, that's going downhill. And because it's going downhill, the bikes are going at a speed that it's okay to have a share-the-road facility there, which is what we have. So we're not really impacting the width of the road, and particularly in the shoulder, so we're allowed to leave the parking that's still allowed there now. However, in the uphill direction, because bikes are going so much slower than vehicles, it's important, and it's important to the city, but it's also important to the funding agencies that are reviewing this project, to have a Class II separated bike lane in the uphill direction. And that Class II separated bike lane goes all the way up to West Line, as I mentioned. If you go to the next slide, it continues on, and these are just match lines, so the top there is a continuation of what you just saw, the bottom is further continuing. On that one, the lower one is where you start to get into the Ocean Air apartment complex at Espinon and Palmetto. Next slide, please. And then there's the intersection at Palmetto and Espinon. And so the parking restriction is most of the east side, which is the uphill direction, and that's because we're putting in the dedicated bike lane. Right now, it's just a shoulder. There's no marked bike lane, and so by putting that in, that real state that's needed for that removes that parking on that side. We're also removing some parking on the west side of Palmetto, and that's primarily because of the width of the road. As you start going downhill, the width of the road is such that there are some parking restrictions there, and I have some, we want to talk more about that. I have an exhibit which actually shows in red the areas specifically are prohibited, if you'd like to see that. Going back to the project description, in terms of trees, we are not taking any trees out on this project. There are several trees that are within the municipal code radius for tree protection, and we'll be doing that with a number of tree protection measures that'll be embedded in the construction contract. Next slide, please. Those are the trees I mentioned. They're really just in two locations. On the left, that's the southbound on-ramp near the trailer park, southbound high on-ramp to Highway One on Palmetto, and then on the right, that is the far corner of Espinon and Palmetto. Those are pine trees near the apartment complex. We're putting in curb ramps and doing some minor concrete work there, so it's pretty minor shallow work, but nonetheless, it's within the radius of the trees, so we'll be protecting them. Next slide, please. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. So as per the information provided, staff finds that the project is consistent with all the zoning standards, the applicable local coastal program and general plan policies, and the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan would have no negative effects on coastal resources and would not create any identified negative neighborhood impacts. As designed, the project, the proposed project would improve bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and usage within the coastal zone, and for these reasons, staff recommends that the planning within the coastal zone. And for these reasons, staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approve coastal development permit CDP four five five dash twenty-three, and tree permit TP dash eight dash twenty-four by adopting the resolution, including the conditions of approval and Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference. That does conclude our presentation. The staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you. I think we probably will have some questions. One thing on these projects where the plans range on a multiple-page area where it's really large, it would be really helpful in the future to have some additional slides that like maybe color code where crosswalks are going. It's maybe sometimes hard for the public to follow when most of that is discussed over a text slide. So if in the future we could have more images, I would really appreciate it. Okay, who would like to start on questions?
I'm happy to start. I'm really in favor of adding bike lanes. Just to be clear, I love crosswalks. I think it's a great improvement. That said, as far as the trees go, I heard the word curb. It makes me wonder, is there any runoff that was watering that tree that's being affected by these curbs?
Not that the arborist, so this project had an arborist report. He didn't note that in his report. One of the tree protection measures is water during construction, but I'm not aware of a permanent watering that was, has been occurring in the curb. We aren't actually removing any curb. We're just rebuilding the curb that's there. So we're not changing the flow of water from what it's been.
And additionally, was there a study done on how many of those parking spots that are being removed are actually being used?
I'd have to defer to planning and perhaps the city engineer for on that regard. What I can say is that we went out numerous times and looked at the parking use during normal times, both during the workday and after the workday, and saw that the use from West Line down to the apartment complexes on both sides was very light, maybe one or two cars parked in that entire stretch. And we have a, I think we have a photo that indicates that condition. There are, however, in some of those areas that are going to be prohibited, we've noted full use of those spaces. The alternate spaces that we will not be affecting, that could be used after, if this were to move forward, is the area north. I don't know if it's possible, Stephanie, to bring up that exhibit that shows the red lines. Just, if you keep going, yeah. No, the parking exhibit, just the one that was an excerpt. Great, thank you very much. So this, this is what I was looking for. So this is the same plan you saw before, but now it's an exhibit just focusing on parking. And so when you see along the curb line on both sides, when you don't see any red, no changes are occurring. And those are areas that, there's no parking prohibition, and this project will not prohibit parking and will not change that condition. When you do see red, there are two types of red. One with a kind of a gray line through it, and then you'll see red that is just red under, and there's no gray line in the middle of it. Where there's a gray line in the middle of it, that was parked, that was an area that was already parking prohibited, and that's indicated there in the legend. If it's just, if it's red without a gray line, that's area, that's a new parking prohibition for this project. And so if you look at just areas that are red in general, if you go down, go back to the previous slide if you would. So all of those areas from West Line on down will still be available for parking. You can almost see, it's hard to see on here, but under that gray street layer, there's actually cars, you can see cars parking under there. No cars are parking there now. There may be one car possibly, but it's very lightly parked, as I mentioned. Now with this project going in, though, that will be an area you can see where it's red, where you won't be able to park that you used to be able to. So cars would go up to this location as an overflow now to make up for that loss. If you go now to the next slide. And then here, you can see, again, on the uphill side or the far, the upper side of these, of the street, east side, excuse me, you can see that's all red, and that's because we're putting in the dedicated bike lane. On the apartment side, the west side, you can see now there's, it's red, but then there's a break as the road widens again. You can see now we're allowing parking on the apartment side down. And if you go to the next slide, all the way down to the intersection, with the exception of a couple of locations near driveways, and to provide sightline for the crosswalk, for the intersection. But you can see, I mean, even in this, those are areas that were already, on the west side, were already indicated no parking. So the other area that could be used for parking with the elimination of these spaces is the area in Palmetto southward, which is just off the screen here. So that's an area that we've seen be very lightly parked. We would presume that would be more heavily parked with these space, with these spaces being removed. So that location there and then north on Palmetto would be the two alternate locations.
So my, my understanding of what I'm seeing and hearing is, is that we're not encouraging people to park across the street without the use of a crosswalk to get them safely back across the street. So it looks to me like a lot of those kind of factors were considered, both the amount of use and safety.
That was one consideration of regarding the, on the east side, that there wasn't a way to get across.
That's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. No one else will go? I have quite a few. So if anyone wants to go before me, speak now.
I have a couple. Two, I guess more comments. Doesn't need to be a condition. I trust the city to take these and do what they will with them.
But before we go to comments, I want to make sure that we hear public comment. So maybe just reserving for questions.
I'm happy to wait until after public comment.
Does anyone want to go before Commissioner Berman? Okay, Commissioner, take it over.
All right, you guys may not be able to speak anymore. Just kidding. I really appreciate this improvement. I love bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements throughout the city, and I think this is a really great improvement to help facilitate the development we foresee in the Sharp Park area. I'm going to start with just some clarification questions. They're a little specific, but bear with me. Packet page 130. It's signing and striping plan dash 10. There's the raised median near the on-ramp where there's already existing curb ramps, and then there's a striped walkway between the two. In the existing condition, the striped walkway doesn't align with the curb ramps. And I noticed that there's two black lines that might be mislabeled because they're using keynote three, which is the shared roadway bicycle pavement marking. But I'm wondering if the striped walkway is going to be realigned to those curb ramps? Is that, is that the intent of the black lines on the plan on this sheet?
Yeah, we will be aligning them to the curb ramps.
Okay.
The crosswalks there, yes.
So the, the black lines there, they're not new curbs, it's just striping?
Correct. I would, not, let me just. Oh, that's correct. Oh, you mean the off, so on the southbound direction near the bus stop, the?
In the, the raised median of the road?
The raised median, though, that, those are curves. I'm sorry, those are stripes.
Stripes, okay.
Stripe median, that's correct. Sorry, yes.
That's, that's what I figured.
That's correct.
Because it's a raised median, but there's striping on it that I believe is supposed to indicate the pedestrian walkway, but it's not currently aligned to the new curb ramps. But the intent is to align that.
That's correct, yes.
Got it. Also on this page, keynote 16 is a hardened center line, but the detail wasn't included. Is that just a standard slightly raised center line in the road, or what's intended to be there?
Note 16 on that sheet.
Yes. Mountable median treatment. Hardened center line. It refers to detail F on SS dash one, but I didn't, I couldn't find that detail on SS dash one.
Commissioner Berman, I see that you're referencing the key, but do you see if that is called out on this?
It is, and I could try to find it again. It was pointing to a central line somewhere. We could circle back to it. I, the main question I had related to that was if it's just going to be a maintenance pane in the middle of the road. So I was curious what that detail was going to be.
We can look into that.
Yeah.
You may be referring to the wrong sheet. I was trying to find the sheet that actually appears on. Maybe just the wrong sheet reference?
Maybe.
I will, we'll look, look, look for that.
Okay, thank you. The, for the RRFBs, I know quite a few cities are using the hand waving type. It, it's a combo push button and hand wave, and it seems like they've been well received in other cities. Was that considered for here?
For the beacons?
For the beacons, the rap, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons? There's a hand waving type?
You know, and we're, our specification is audible, that they'd be audible, and that I don't think hand wave is one of the, is one of the features that we're specifying? Is it, is the comment to evaluate that and look at that?
I was just curious if it was considered, because I, a few cities in San Mateo and Santa Clara County have been using them recently. So I was just curious if they were considered here, because they seem to be well received by the public.
I don't know that they have on this project, but I will take a look at that.
Okay. Another clarification question, also on packet page 130. Where the new RRFB will go in the new, I'm going to call it a pedestrian refuge area.
Would you mind giving us the drawing number?
SS dash 10.
Still SS 10, okay.
Yeah. I wanted to make sure that the new RRFB is going to be on top of a new six-inch curb, correct? It's not just going to be directly on the asphalt with pavement marking around it. There's going to be a true pedestrian refuge area there with raised curb?
Yeah, there's two beacons. You referring to the one in the southbound or the northbound?
The one in the northbound.
Yes.
And that's going to be a, I guess, do you know what I mean by pedestrian refuge area?
Yes.
With raised curb protecting the pedestrian?
Correct.
Okay, great, great. Okay, also on this page, so SS dash 10 again. Are there any concerns with the bus stop having to weave into the bike lane? I know it probably won't be often, but when buses do visit that stop, they'll be entirely blocking the bike lane. Are there any concerns with that?
Are you referring to both? But there's bus stops at this, on this sheet at both directions. Are you referring to just the southbound or both?
I guess both. I, yeah, both directions. I was focused on the northbound one, but you're right, the southbound has another one too, where the bus would block the bike lane.
Yeah, that's fairly common. I mean, it's, we're, we're dealing with that shared bike bus scenario with signage and striping.
Yeah, I saw that.
So it's really just up to the driver and the bike to be aware. But we're just handling that with the markings, the pavement markings.
Okay.
And it's fairly common.
Okay.
We did actually just meet with SAM Trans recently and the bus stop.
Yep.
Operations folks, and they were okay with this.
Okay.
With that being shared and the way that lays out.
I appreciate that you met with SAM Trans already to get their feedback. There was a public comment received about how the city will be handling notification of displacing the oversized vehicles that tend to park in areas where no parking will be allowed. Is there a notification process for that? I mean, I know it's not, these aren't permitted oversized vehicle parking areas, but for those who do use this road to park their oversized vehicles that I think some people use for housing, what's the notification process for them? Because I think the community wouldn't want those people to then park their oversized vehicles, you know, in front of someone's house in the neighborhood.
So Commissioner Berman, I'm not sure what you're talking about in terms of notice. So if the city were to prohibit OS oversized vehicle ordinance parking, oversized vehicle parking in this area, they would have to post a sign indicating that it's prohibited. And only then could then the city enforce that prohibition. There may be some other type of notice that staff posts to make people who are parking in that area aware of the transition, but in turn, and I'm not, I can't speak to that. I don't know if staff is planning to do that. But in terms of enforcing the parking prohibition, there would need to be a sign advising drivers that oversized vehicle parking is prohibited in that area before enforcement could take place.
Thank you. And actually, yes, let me back my question up. In general, does staff have a plan for just notifying the community and the public of forthcoming parking restrictions?
So I think, I think the city engineer may need to confirm, but I think there's a perhaps 72-hour advance notification prior to designating a no parking area?
So in terms of, oh, sorry, this is Roland Yip, Deputy Director of Public Works slash City Engineer. Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair and Planning Commissioners. So yes, we will need to confirm the notifications as needed for 72-hour changes to the bike area. In terms of the oversized vehicle parking, that's being changed. The changes are that are happening on Espinat. There's an eight-foot bike striping that will be in place now because of the implementation of the bike lanes. And according to our code and the definition of oversized vehicle parking, they start at seven feet. So an oversized vehicle can still park there. So we're not limiting it. We're not making changes in terms of the availability, but in terms of the width, they do need to be within that space. And that includes the entire width of the vehicle, including the mirrors. So we, we are making that one change on Espinat. And, and you know, this is to promote our multi, multimodal use of the area to encourage bicycle and also there's pedestrian improvements in the area, but also to make it, the road accessible to all users, not just vehicular traffic. So this follows our bike pet master plan, as Sean Rose has previously mentioned.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess you mentioned it'll be reduced to seven-foot width, and that will have to encompass a whole width of a vehicle, including the side mirrors?
So it would be striped at eight feet. And that's the center line. And the striping itself can range from four to six inches. Right now, it's being proposed for a four-inch striping. So yes, that area outside of the striping, it has to encompass the entire vehicle.
I guess, is it common to use seven feet? Because I've seen eight feet.
Oh, so seven feet I mentioned was according to our municipal of where over- Oh, so seven feet I mentioned was according to our munico of where oversized vehicle starts. In terms of what's considered oversized vehicle width is seven feet, the striping starts at eight feet.
Got it. I see.
According to the plans, and that is pretty typical of a lot of standards to have an eight-foot parking area.
Thank you. So for the parking notice, and just to notify the community that certain stretches of the road will soon no longer have parking available for them or the public, is it possible to notify them in advance of 72 hours? So maybe posting a notice a month prior? Is that something that Public Works can do?
Yes, we can definitely make postings and notify the neighborhood of that change several months, a month earlier, if possible.
Okay, we could discuss it as a commission, but I appreciate that. My next question, my last question for now, you might be able to help with. I appreciate that curb ramps are being upgraded. I know the city, and we'll see later in the consideration item tonight, that the city is working to upgrade a lot of the curb ramps throughout the city in the public realm. I am wondering why the curb ramps in front of Ingrid B. Lacy School are not being upgraded. So on Palmetto and the cross streets are, I believe it's Surf, Shoreview, and Bella Vista.
So the scope of the project, it was, the basis of it was when it was applied for with the grant applications, the main bulk of it was scoped to do the bike lanes, and that's the bulk of the budget. We've added what we could based on some public feedback. I think since when we went to get approval for the consultant agreement amendment, there were some additional comments to add some Esplanade. We can continue to try to add as much as we can, but we're limited by the budget at this time. And I think in terms of curb ramps in the whole city and how it gets prioritized, I think a further plan could be developed in just how to prioritize that and go through the city with the budget that we have available would be the best approach.
Okay. The curb ramps that were identified for improvement with this plan, are they locations where there's no curb ramp at all? Like, it's currently just a six-inch curb?
That was before my time. That was just part of the grant application. I think they were located, a lot of them were located on Esplanade and trying to improve that corridor. But yeah, I think there were just, yeah, there were just a couple that they had chosen to include with the grant application at that time. And I think that would be the approach when we ever do curb ramps outside of our paving projects. The paving projects trigger it because of a Department of Justice requirement that needs to be done with resurfacing projects. So outside of that, we don't really have a list at this moment other than from public requests. So it must have come from public requests.
Then also in front of IBL, was there consideration for RRFBs to be installed for those crosswalks or at least one of them as a traffic calming measure in front of the elementary school? I know they're not proposed with this plan, but I feel like if we're going to introduce RRFBs, especially we'll see in the consideration item tonight that the city has prioritized school crossings for RRFB installation, I think this is a good opportunity to install at least one in front of IBL.
So we have a separate project. It's our mid-block crossing project, which has installed RFBs at numerous school locations, and IBL has two RFBs, I believe, for that project.
Oh, so is that project currently in?
It's in construction.
In construction?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Actually, again, and this is going to be my last question right now, I promise. In front of IBL, I noticed in Google Earth, there's little tiny cones that want to form a, like, pedestrian bulbout. It's almost like someone put the cones there to make their own traffic calming measure in front of IBL. Is the project that you spoke of going to install a pedestrian bulbout? Or has it been considered if there's space in the right of way for it?
Sean Rose is also the project manager on the project, but I want to say it was included.
Yeah, well, we've considered it. It's been, we were approached by the school about that, and we're aware of those cones. They're on the east side, right in front of the school, and they are on both sides of the crosswalk. And it looks like they're doing it to daylight the crosswalk. And so we've been approached by the Safe Route to School Coordinator for this area, who we've worked with on that project. And she asked us if we could incorporate it in that other project, which we can't because we're in construction, but she asked for it to be pursued as part of a future project and potentially even this project. We've talked, we haven't decided we're going to incorporate it in this project yet because we're right at the upper limit of our budget, and we weren't, that was not included. So we've talked to her about, she's indicated she could maybe contribute funding to add that. So we are aware of it, and we're looking to potentially add it either to this project or a future project.
Okay. Well, that's all my questions, and a couple of those items I'd like to hear from other commissioners about later after public comment. Thank you.
I have two questions while your city engineer is here. Referring to packet page 117, drawing CD2, detail B, the typical one-ramp corner installation I see here, as a person that pushes a stroller up and down Palmetto several times a week, and the new street scape there is great, I think in practice, the ramp forces you one of two options. You either have to jump off the curb or enter into the north-south flowing traffic if you're trying to cross north-south. All of the ramps are, direct you towards an east-west path of travel. So if you're crossing, coming north and south on Palmetto, there's no way to push a stroller or a wheelchair without entering into the adjacent traffic lane as it's currently oriented. So I don't know if that's, needs to be, this detail seems to allow for what I'm talking about, but in reality, was being constructed on Palmetto doesn't have that. So just something I wanted to note for maybe construction management and for the inspectors to really keep an eye on. The flares aren't, they aren't sloped enough to allow you to enter the north-south crosswalk without also entering into the north-south flow of traffic as it's currently constructed. My second question was if anybody had thought of as a condition to require during any kind of excavation for curb work, especially if it's left overnight, some kind of physical barrier. I asked this because I was riding my bicycle home from a friend's house during the last phase of bicycle improvements, and going the wrong way up a one-way street to my house, all the West Sharp Park streets are one-way. There was no delineation at all, no signage or anything. Rode right into an excavation, went over the handlebars and got pretty beat up. There was delineation going the path of travel, but it was dark and there's no street light there, or there wasn't at the time. So I'd love to see, especially if we're really going to leave these things overnight or over the weekend, as that case was. They'd just done the excavation, there was no forming in yet, but I'd love to see these, you know, at least caution tape and delineate it off so that people aren't crashing into them in the night.
Oh, yes, for sure. That shouldn't be happening, and we will have more presence out there. And we are having a lot more presence with our current construction projects and sending our inspectors out there and making sure they are secure for the weekends and for nighttime.
Sure. Kind of a shock to turn your bicycle onto your own street and find there's a hole in the pavement where there wasn't the day before. So yeah, I'd like to really keep a note on that one this time.
Yeah, for sure. We will do that on behalf of Public Works here. And just a slight clarification about the paving work that's being done on the project is a slurry seal, so not quite a complete pavement resurfacing, but just a slurry seal for some digouts.
Thank you.
Okay. I have four or so, but they're simpler than, they're not very technical. The thermoplastic, the green thermoplastic that's on Palmetto, I feel like is a really nice, that's existing on Palmetto that was done with the Phase One street scape, is a really nice element here. And I noticed that you have the green thermoplastic at the, where it crosses the off-ramp, but we don't have it on the actual Class Two bike lane. I know that it's an expense, which I'm guessing is the answer to this question, but was that considered? And if not, could it be?
It was just, I think it was a maintenance consideration. The cost of it, I mean, especially given the length that is creating the total length and then the cost of installing it, but also the cost of maintaining it over time.
Okay. That's, you know, since it's the same street, it would be cool to have it. I don't know, Commissioner Berman, I would love to hear your.
I absolutely understand and agree with you. The green thermoplast is a fantastic traffic calming measure.
Yeah.
Especially on roads where cars do go fast. I mean, they're not supposed to, but they do, they can. I would have had the same question as you, except I've worked on basically the same project in a different city, in different county, and the thermoplast is a maintenance concern, and it's a cost item for such a stretch of road, but it is a lot to maintain.
Do you think it's confusing to bicyclists to have?
Okay. I don't, especially in an area where there's less maneuvering of, like, it's, there's less cross intersections. So there's less, like, conflict areas. And then, but the important, in my opinion, the important locations are where there are actual intersections and conflict areas, which the plan proposes. If we had unlimited budget, then I would definitely fight for more thermoplastic.
Okay. And then, I wanted to ask, I'm trying to find the drawing sheet number, but I felt like the crosswalks in the north-south direction seemed to be great, but there's some east-west connections that I feel like seemed like they were, like, almost like they were intended to be there, but just weren't on the drawings. So on SS-5 for the, maybe SS-5 is not the best graphic, but the pedestrian safety zone, I think my first question on that one is, can there be a crosswalk there? And my second question is, can there be trees in the pedestrian? Like, these to me are more like bulbouts, so can there be landscape pockets and a crosswalk? It's like it'd so naturally fit there.
You're referring to the bulbouts that are?
Correct. It demarcated as 12 and 13, correct.
Yeah, those were created specifically for traffic. They serve one purpose, and that's to con traffic, reduce vehicle speeds. I don't know if that would be, if that would make sense for a crosswalk. We haven't actually looked at it, but we can take a look at it. I don't know that that would be something we'd be able to do, though.
Yeah, so we did look at a crosswalk at Monterey as part of another request. So because of the way it curves, there's some site distance issues, roughly around 150 feet is needed, and so that equates to around six parking spaces, which we need to get removed for that location. So the most ideal place likely is to be Bill Drake, but then, you know, we've already added what we could in terms of the budget we have on the project. We added one on Manor to get it close to the middle, get it close to that overlook area, the sand overlook area. So the challenge with Bill Drake is there's around 80 linear feet of sidewalk, which will also need to be done, and that's just a sidewalk. The curb and gutter is also not in great shape. So once you have to replace curb and gutter, you also have to do a one-foot asphalt plug, and that really increases the cost. So some of these things are just constrained by the budget that we have and what was originally scoped with the grant. So moving forward, if we can get a list, then we can definitely add these curb ramps into the city.
I think the list is helpful. I mean, that literally was like my next two questions was like, this, the bulbouts, Bill Drake and Monterey, seem to be like naturally screaming for a crosswalk in the east-west direction. I mean, I hear you. I don't know. I hear you. Commissioner Berman, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I guess, are there other, because there are instances where there's crosswalks and it doesn't have the ideal stopping site distance, but there's other measures such as caution signs, pavement markings, like the, I call them shark tooth pavement markings, little triangles. Because I agree with Chair Hauser, Monterey is such a main road. It would be, especially if we're introducing new bicycle and pedestrian facilities with this plan, a crosswalk seems pretty natural there. Of course, we want to keep safety in mind, but are there other measures that could be implemented in conjunction with the sidewalk understanding that the stopping site distance isn't ideal?
So that was the recommendation from our traffic engineers who studied that intersection, was the best and safest approach was to have around 150 linear feet of parking removed. So we could touch base with them and see if there's some additional recommendations, but that was the recommendation based on the speed and the track, from the traffic that we had on the counts.
Okay. My last question is, is there a good, and maybe the traffic calming measures that are already being put in place, or just adding the bike lane will help with this, but like, is there a speed hump that could be put, like, halfway up the hill?
So we did look extensively at speed humps and the, you know, the placement as part of the project. There's no speed hump policy in the city. So once we implemented, we would have to have some sort of policy on how to take in a request and put them in the rest of the city, which we currently do not have. There are challenges with putting in speed humps. People who request for them, who live on the blocks, are usually in great favor, but then there's challenges for public safety, for fire, and for police, and then also for other vehicles generally may complain about them afterwards and then require the removal. That's been the common trend in other cities. So it's challenging. It requires also staff to oversee the program, which we currently are very limited on our staff at the moment to be able, and we don't have another, we don't have a traffic engineer on staff. We also don't have another dedicated person to oversee this at the moment.
Is it unusual for a city not to have a speed hump policy? Never heard that before.
Yeah, that I can't comment on, but we currently don't have one, and it's a limitation because of our staffing.
Okay. Does anyone else have comments, or sorry, questions? Commissioner Raffield?
I had some questions regarding mostly Esplanade between Bill Drake and probably down to Avalon. As far as, and can you clarify the 72-hour notifications? Obviously, everyone will have to move for both the slurry and obviously the layout for the lines. Those OSVs can return to those spots once that is completed, the project is completed. Is that correct?
So the definition for the OSVs as defined in munico, any vehicle over seven feet. So if the vehicle that's over seven feet can be confined within a space that's eight feet minus the striping, then yes, they can return.
And that includes appearances off the vehicle?
No, that needs to include the mirrors, so the mirror cannot overhang on the striping.
Is there another question on the 72s? This is a phased project on certain, start at A and end at B or C or whatever. It's not going to be a complete thing. The 72-hour notice is, I don't know how far that's going to go, what the length of the, say, Phase A or Phase One is. Is that starting at the north end, the south end? Is this all an all-encompassing project? I'm assuming this is phased.
So in terms of, it's going to go as one bid. So in terms of the timing, it's not planning to phase as in, you know, several different parts of the project taking place here, but then it's going to go over one project. It should just be just be maybe several months of work.
Okay. So that would include then the 72 for the entire length of the project? Is that an accurate statement? The 72-hour parking restrictions?
So the, the parking restrictions and the notifications for the construction would be separate. Um, so we'll ask the contractor to do notifications for impacts of, you know, wherever they put, and it could be the curb ramps, they need to notify anyone who's being impacted in the immediate area. Uh, so I think the requests in terms of the, um, or sorry, is this, is this about the OSV, uh, notification for future parking or just in general construction?
Essentially, it basically involves that. Uh, vehicles, the regular cars, uh, are, are quite a bit more easily parked in, uh, certain areas. Some of the other OSVs, um, that will obviously be displaced temporarily from there. Um, I'm just concerned about that, where they're going to go.
Yeah, so, um, that's, it's going to be, um, wherever the work is taking place or could be different crews for concrete, for striping, and if they need the parking spaces, the, they will come in and put in, uh, signs for no parking, um, at least 72 hours in advance, also notifications to all the residents who could be impacted. Uh, the biggest impact would be the slurry seal. Um, so in terms of the concrete and the striping, the, the parking impacts will be minor.
My other concern with the OSVs, obviously, we do have people, uh, occupying those, those vehicles. Um, has, uh, PRC been notified and, and, uh, any possible assistance there in that displacement?
So...
Has basically a contingency for them to, uh, you know, move to another spot?
So, uh, the, the PRC, um, has not been notified. That, I think they are mainly oversee the TSPP, the Temporary Parking, Safe Parking Program. So this is separate. There's some designated, um, parking that's shown on our, OSV parking that's in our website. Uh, so they, yeah, on the planning commissioner, I mean, uh, um, Planning Director, uh, Murdock, did you want to comment here?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Director, uh, Yip. Um, good evening, Commissioners, Planning Director, Christian Murdock. Uh, just a couple of things. Yes, the, uh, Pacifica Resource Center also has, um, uh, unhoused on the coast outreach team that tries to make contact with folks that don't have traditional housing arrangements to see if they're interested in supportive services that can include transitioning them to permanent housing options. Um, I'll also note, uh, just the way I'm interpreting some of the aspects of your question about parking, I do want to clarify that, um, any oversized vehicle that may be parked in one of these locations is only allowed to park there up to 72 hours as a general matter in terms of city parking regulations. And so these should not be particular segments of the street where folks are, um, lawfully inhabiting an oversized vehicle for an extended period of time anyways. So really, the question is, if they're moving every 72 hours anyways, is there a reasonable place, um, for them to move the vehicle to that's compliant with, uh, essentially the existing baseline parking regulations? Which leads me to the last part of your question, as I understand it, that I wanted to address. Not really so much phasing from a sort of project management and, um, project concept standpoint, but is the entire area going to be no parking for the entirety of the project, I think is your question? Or could it be broken up into more logical chunks, right, that from a practical standpoint are only being demolished and prepared and constructed in a, a sequence? And then the team might move on to another area, or is all of the demolition occurring along the whole project length, and then all of the next phase, and then all of the final work, such that the entire area is unavailable to all types of vehicles, including oversized vehicles for the entirety of the project? Is that, is that one of the aspects of your question?
Yeah.
So, um, Deputy Director Yip, is there any expectation that the project might be functionally broken down into smaller segments such that the entirety of the linear length, if you will, um, that that would not have to be off limits to parking for the entire duration of the project?
So, uh, typical slurry seal, um, that's done in a day is roughly around 150, it's roughly 150,000 square feet. Um, but we would have to check exactly how much of Esplanade they, they could do. We could potentially spec it out so that, to limit how much they do on the exact day, so that all of Esplanade or all of Palmetto, wherever we're doing the slurry, is not impacted, and there's not a, a syndicate number of vehicles that need to move. Uh, but that typically, the, how much you limit the contractor would affect the bid pricing. So the, the most cost-effective way is to come in and do close to 150,000 square feet at one time. If you break it up into two separate days, that's just going to drive the cost of the project up.
Uh, one last thing, just my concern, uh, on the, if the, if the project is started all at, all at once, there is quite a bit of parking, on-street parking, that will not be allowed if that's, um, um, the effect of doing, doing, starting the project in its entirety, essentially, the linear run of it. Um, is that, um, I'm, I'm just curious where those after-hours people, when they come home from work, are going to park, um, with the 72s? That's going to be very tight, um, searching for parking. We all know that's a, a serious issue.
Yeah, so, um, let me clarify. Uh, so we're, we're not requesting for people to move their cars for a total of 72 hours. The, the, the slurry seal will take place for one day, and it, it usually can be opened up within several hours. So it is an impact for that one day, and people will have to find other areas to park. Uh, but it is during work hours as well, so there's limited, um, uh, impacts for people who are going to work. Um, and then also it, it will, our spec, we will spec it out so that they really need, they need to reopen the street by 5:00 PM that day.
And one, final one, uh, restrictions on, um, as far as the slurry, slurry seal, as far as weather goes. Uh, what are the, uh, you know, foggy days, uh, what are their restrictions as far as doing the work, weather-wise?
So in terms of the summer, they have been able to come in and do a slurry seal on the project. On, if it is very foggy, the contractors may play, may postpone it for another day. Uh, so sometimes we do aim to try to do a slurry seal in our Indian summer, uh, roughly after the summer and November time, or October is when there's the best weather in Pacifica. But, uh, yeah, you cannot do a slurry seal if it is too foggy or not hot enough, so it does need to be over the curve.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may, just one more perhaps clarifying question for Deputy Director Yip. Um, as we're, I think, trying to understand the, the impact on-street parking from the project. Um, is it the case, Deputy Director Yip, that after the initial, uh, slurry seal, that there may be a need to come back and do another no-parking period to do striping or any other, uh, post-paving work?
There, there is potential, depending on where, where the striping lies. Um, and again, it's going to be one day at a time only during work hours for those, that scope of work as well. Uh, that could get spread out a little bit easier compared to the slurry seal, though. But the impacts that we've seen, uh, in other areas of the city has, um, you know, it has been manageable. Uh, it has been manageable in terms of the amount of, uh, parking that gets moved around for much more denser cities. I come from Daly City where there's, sometimes there's like seven vehicles in a single home, and they, they have to manage as well for their slurry seal program, and people find a way.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I was going to open public comment. Did, did you have a question? Do you want to ask it now? Okay. So it's, yes, Commissioner Berman.
Um, I thought about this when you mentioned the construction will occur when we have the best weather. How will this parking affect Fog Fest? I guess, I mean, it's probably not something for this project to solve, but I believe a lot of people use parking along Palmetto for Fog Fest, which is already tough to park at.
Yeah. So, uh, can I clarify, Fog Fest is in September?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know. We have pretty good weather in September.
So, uh, given the timeframe, uh, right now, it's already June. Uh, I, I, I believe we are already outside of that timeframe to go out into construction. Um, yeah, we, we were, we're coordinating, uh, Fog Fest with our other projects as well. We have the Sharp Park Pedestrian Improvement Project that which, that is right in, uh, the Sharp Park area that we are bidding and constructing outside of that timeframe.
Okay. Thanks. And then I, I found, for keynote 16, I found where it occurs. It's, um, page SS dash seven. And it's at the intersection of Esplanade and Manor. Perhaps maybe after public comment, if, if someone could pull up a picture of what's expected there, that'd be appreciated.
And that was Detail F?
It, the keynote says, oh, on this page, it says Detail G on SS one.
I don't see a Detail G on SS one, but maybe I'm missing out.
Maybe after public comment, if you could just pull up a photo.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Okay. So with that, I'm going to open public comment. Um, reminder that folks will have three minutes to speak. Um, I'm going to call the, um, next three speakers. The first person will be Suzanne Moore, followed by Jared, uh, Long...
Okay, Longnecker, thank you. Uh, followed by Daniel Beckman.
Suzanne Moore from the Manor, and my remarks are totally changed because of the conversation that has occurred here with the Commission and city staff. And I'm just so grateful, first of all, that Commissioners are really looking into how to create this program to be safe for all pedestrians and bicyclists who are going to be involved, and especially, uh, considering those who are legally parked in oversized vehicles in this area, too. Now, I have to admit that our engineer from Public Works was so soft-spoken that I couldn't quite make out everything he said, so I'm going to tap his expertise before I split this evening. But I just am very grateful that all people in our community are being considered equally, and that their safety is being considered equally. And, uh, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay. Jared Longnecker, followed by Daniel Beckman, followed by Gabe Church.
This is good. Suzanne, I, I agree with you. We're all very excited about this. So, uh, we've been hearing rumors about this for a long time, and, uh, for like the last few years, we're all pretty excited about this. Um, and any stop sign or yield sign is going to help it. We've been dealing with traffic going 90 miles an hour down the road, so we're stoked. Um, regarding the RVs, um, we can presume that anything, like a standard RV, a quick Google search will show you that it's over eight feet. So we can presume that any OSV will not be allowed to park there. Is that, is that correct? Oh, he's busy. Okay. I mean, it's, from my understanding, is that right?
So, so the Commissioners cannot answer questions during public comment?
Gotcha.
It's your opportunity to talk to the Commission.
Okay. Um, we'll say that we're hoping that, um, no RVs can park on our side. We live on 455 Esplanade between Bill Drake and, uh, Manor, and we've been dealing with RVs blocking our views all the time. I know it sounds like a pretty minor complaint, but 72 hours, a lot of time, it's, it's, it's six days, and they don't get ticketed or anything, but, um, if there's no questions, I got nothing else. So, thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Beckman, followed by Gabe Church, followed by, um, Cliff Lawrence, and that is the last speaker card that I have.
Um, I want to thank everyone for their time and, uh, all the effort that goes forward, uh, with these, you know, um, with these different projects. Um, what I, what I care about, and what I see with this project is, you know, in terms of the oversized vehicles, is, uh, just a, a safer area where, you know, I, I live on 465. I have a daughter. She's six, uh, and, uh, and a wife, and, um, the idea of going out and riding a bike in that area without having to worry about danger and, and, you know, fights and, you know, uh, police activity, right, due to fights and, you know, different things like that, it sounds great. And I just hope that, um, the Council here and the planners, um, really take into consideration the feedback from the people that actually live there. I mean, uh, when Ms. Berman referenced not wanting people to have RVs move and park in front of their home, well, that's our home, you know, and because, just because it's not a house and it's an apartment complex shouldn't matter. I don't care about the views. I care about the safety, and I care about the, uh, you know, illegal activity that goes on there. So I hope that, uh, more attention is drawn to it, and I, uh, intend to come to more of these meetings and, uh, bring that to the public's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Gabe Church, followed by Cliff Lawrence.
Yeah, thank you for your time, Council. Um, I also live in between Bill Drake and Manor on Esplanade. Uh, I moved to Pacifica about two years ago, or through, going on three years now. Um, since I've lived on Esplanade, I've seen, uh, RVs getting steadily worse. Um, I've seen the pedestrian right-of-way becoming really dangerous. Um, I've seen people on bikes attacked by dogs coming from RVs. I've seen, um, all kinds of, seen RVs dumping their sewage on the streets. Uh, frequently, I've seen, I saw somebody get attacked on Christmas, Christmas Day, just a pedestrian walking down the street. Um, people speed down our street a lot, um, as well. Um, it seems like they don't have a lot of respect for kind of anything there. There's not a lot of crosswalks. There's not really a stop sign. We do have the bus stop, but nobody, you know, the bus doesn't come that often, so people do often speed down our street. So I think, um, I speak for the whole neighborhood. We're all really excited about the bike lane project. We want to be able to ride our bikes. We want to be able to walk down the street, you know, without stepping in, you know, human experiment. Um, we're hoping that this project will clear up some of, you know, the problems we have. The 72-hour parking rule is rarely enforced. Uh, it seems like the police officers have no ability to actually move anyone when they violate that law. It's kind of a toothless ability to actually remove anyone. So they do get ticketed, but it doesn't change anything. Um, I think that I kind of, I was taken aback by some of the comments about, you know, people in neighborhoods being impacted while this project is going on. You know, the people that live on Manor were impacted every single day. We didn't sign up to live in an area, you know, where unhoused are also sheltered. I think if the City of Pacifica seriously, you know, wants to address this problem, maybe they should consider putting in a parking lot for unhoused people living in RVs, um, or something else along those lines. But, you know, I think this is a great project. The community is behind. Think the local businesses will benefit. Uh, some of them have already shut down nearby. The music store recently, just right behind us. Um, I think more people will come to the area, hopefully enjoy the coast and the parks along Esplanade. We all really like it in that area, and we hope to see it cleaner and safer for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Cliff.
Hello, Cliff Lawrence here. Uh, my thanks again to all the Commission. Uh, I noticed, I was really amazed and appreciative of the detail that you, you get down to and, uh, consider. It's a lot of work. Uh, this is an area I've got some familiarity with. I'll tell you that, um, traffic speeds are excessive on Palmetto, especially on the downgrade coming off, uh, from West Line down towards the, the Bluffs. Uh, people like to really use that strip as kind of, uh, see as an opportunity to, uh, get up some speed and make some noise if their vehicle is designed for them. Uh, the other thing that, uh, I liked your project. I want you to know that. Uh, my concern is for the displacement of the oversized vehicles. There's a, an unusually large number of them uh, on Esplanade. I usually count it about seven, up to 17 from the beach access down to, uh, the post office. And it, it's fine that we do these things, but, um, whether temporarily or permanently, we need to identify more spaces where we will allow these people who, uh, by their necessity, need to live in this fashion. Uh, this is compassion, an issue of compassion. And, uh, I, I hope that, uh, we can find more spaces that we knowingly allow this to occur. We have, to my mind, too few right now, and we need to extend that. And so, uh, it's a matter of compassion for these people in our community. Uh, I ask you to address that and consider it as, uh, unfortunate. I ask you to address that and consider it as unfortunately part of our housing plan, because it's not going to go away anytime soon. I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any raised hands on Zoom? There are no raised hands at this time. Okay, so I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. Does anyone want to re-ask questions or take it away?
The items that I noted that I wanted to revisit, I'm curious what the mountable median would be.
Yeah, I think that, that detail is missing from that plan that it's supposed to be on. It's supposed to be Detail G. There's a Detail E, but it's not, it's not the correct one, so that was a good catch, and we'll correct that.
Is there a photo? I'm just, I mean...
Oh, what it's going to look like?
Yeah.
I don't know that it'll, I, I'm not sure. I'll have to look, look into that, yeah.
I'd like to talk about the improvements in front of IBL. Actually, would you be able to remind me of what the other project is doing in front of IBL? I don't know if this, this might be a Public Works question.
Sure, yeah. So the current project is installing, was refreshing the ladder crosswalks at Shoreview and Surf, and it's installing, it's taking out the in-ground, the old in-ground lights, and then it's replacing those with two, with brand-new flashing beacons on both sides of the street.
So at both of those crosswalks, there'll be new RRFBs?
They're, they're already installed. They were installed within the past week.
Okay, got it. Well, great, and we briefly discussed adding a pedestrian bulb out, and it sounds like the manager of the school is interested in that as well. It sounds like it could be considered for this project. I mean, even just a painted, applying, you know, painted surface for that pedestrian bulb out, just as a traffic calming measure, I, I'm guessing that's not a huge cost impact for this project, but I'd be interested to see that. I mean, this is a heavily-used school crossing, both of them.
I mean, I totally concur with that. I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in or go on to the items.
I was encouraged to hear that Public Works is considering a number of other improvements, particularly around schools. I found that extremely encouraging. One other question I had for our engineer over there was, if we can't do a speed hump to slow traffic like the citizens here that were concerned about the speed, I heard a lot of comments about people being concerned about the speed, could we do a rumble strip instead? Anything that's going to make their cars make a whole bunch of noise and encourage them to slow down.
I think, I think the intent of a rumble strip also is to reduce the width of the travel lane, so that is one item that we could do. I mean, there, there are a lot of horizontal measures that we can add into the street that's similar to that. I mean, yield markings were mentioned. We can add channelizers, chicane, we can add more signage out there. So there are other ones. The other thing we can add, we could add some raised crosswalks as a potential, those are very costly, but that's, that's, you know, that's something that's very beneficial to the pedestrians, and that also is a horizontal, so that's, acts like a speed hump, but it's only for the crosswalk. So there's a lot of measures we can add into the street. We, we just need funding, so we need a...
Yeah, but it, but it wouldn't interfere with, like, fire trucks and police response and ambulance response, something, a lesser measure, but still reduce the speed.
Yes, in terms of horizontal measures, like reducing travel lanes and chicanes, yes, it would not be, impact public safety vehicles, but then a raised crosswalk will, because they will have to go over it, same as any other vehicle.
And is it really true that the project you're bringing before us tonight, that for $37,000 out of the city's budget, you're getting us a million dollars' worth of safety improvements?
That, that's the budget. We will see when we go out to bid.
Can you do more of that, please?
Oh, yeah, for sure. We're always actively looking for grants and not having to utilize our local funds. You know, bike lanes and safe routes to school projects are the most common grant projects out there, and we're always looking for them.
Yeah, I just don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. I want to thank you for what you've done in doing this, and I think you've heard a lot of our concerns for, for future projects and for future consideration, and particularly with the emphasis around the school stuff. I think that's super, super important. I think it's a little bit ridiculous that in front of turnover, you can drive faster than you can up fastler, but, you know, that's just one man's opinion. So I appreciate you looking into it and trying to make Pacifica a safer, better place. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Wright, yes, and we'll definitely be developing lists and getting the public requests in, and so that we can use it for our future applications. Whenever someone puts in an email to us, we can utilize that as a part of our applications.
And how does the public go about doing that?
They could just email to me directly.
And how do they do that?
I mean, I, my email's on the website, and I can pass it out here if needed, and there, I mean, when it goes into the engineering emails, that will also make its way to me at some point as well.
And that includes for speed control measures, anything around schools, any of those kind of considerations, those should be directed to you?
That's fine, yes, yeah.
Great.
Definitely look into that.
Thank you.
I also wanted to note Commissioner Ferguson's comment on consideration of the angle and the type of curb ramp used. I also push a stroller pretty often, not in this neighborhood, but I think that was a really good call-out that I didn't think of myself even.
I've heard a lot of talk of extra conditions, but I'd like to make a comment, just so the public knows we're hearing them. I'm also a former resident of 455 Espinade. That problem existed then, not the way it does now, but certainly we hear you. I'd like to suggest that these, these concerns be brought up consistently at the city council meetings, kind of outside of this body's purview to do anything besides specific projects as they relate to, to our kind of pointed scope. I think this is a great project, and maybe it will help address some of those concerns, and hopefully with the implementation of this project, we'll start enforcing pre-existing laws a little better, but that's really outside of this body's purview.
Okay. I don't see any other comments.
I'll just glom on. I think it's awesome that we're doing this, and I liked what Commissioner Wright said about letting perfection be the enemy of the good. So I'll reserve my lovely east-west crosswalks for another day. But, I mean, I think we're hearing support. I don't know if there are need to be, I don't think these are conditions, right, because we don't have money to condition them. So I think the question is, does someone want to make a motion, or are there...
I'm happy to make a motion, and I guess before I make the motion, I agree that we, we have a lot of requests, but we are not going to condition this project for them, but we hope that the staff here can take these requests back to your team and see maybe we can incorporate them into the budget, especially because it involves safety in one of our most popular neighborhoods. I move that the Planning Commission finds the project as exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves coastal development permit CDP 45523, and tree permit TP824 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right, thanks, everyone. Okay, moving right along to our last item, to our last public hearing. Consideration, Item 4, review of the 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, for consistency with the general plan. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening. My name's Stephanie Sartan, the senior planner with the Planning Division. I'm going to be giving a very brief verbal presentation for Item 4 tonight. The item is related to the City of Pacifica's Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, which is a planning tool used to prioritize capital projects. Capital project needs on a five-year cycle. Each year, the city council is asked to review and adopt the five-year CIP update with new projects and statuses of existing projects. The council's approval of the CIP does not constitute appropriation of funds to, to specific projects. However, prior to the city council's adoption, as required by California state law, the Planning Commission must determine if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan. The Planning Commission's role also does not extend to project priorities or funding. As such, staff is recommending that the commission find the proposed capital improvements project summarized in the staff report before you tonight are consistent with the city's 2024 general plan and adopt the attached resolution. The staff report includes references to, from the general plan as appropriate to justify the consistency with the projects. There are public work staff in attendance tonight available to help answer any questions regarding these capital projects. That does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. If everyone's amenable to it, I'd love to just open public comment and then do questions and, okay. So I don't have any speaker cards for this, so if anyone wants to speak on the CIP, okay. Seeing none, do we have any folks on Zoom or on the phone? We have no raised hands at this time. Okay. So I will close the public comment on this item and move it back to the commission for questions of staff and deliberation.
I'll go first. The improvements included in the CIP, I know typically we aren't allowed to add to the list. Is that correct?
Good evening, commissioners. Planning Director Christian Murdock. That's correct. The city council has had an opportunity to look at this. They've determined the projects that the city should include in the CIP, and as a matter of law, we need to bring the CIP to the commission to confirm those projects are consistent with the general plan. With that said, we can carry forward feedback or thoughts or suggestions about future projects, but to require or otherwise modify the CIP unless a project is inconsistent with the general plan as found by the commission, there's really a limited opportunity to do that.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll start with an intersection that I have feedback on. The intersection of Lindemar Boulevard and Oddstead, right at the county park entrance. I think there needs to be a crosswalk there. It's extremely unsafe, especially because a lot of people park in the Lindemar neighborhood and then walk into the county park, so they don't have to pay $6 parking fee. And I, myself, have almost been hit multiple times, one of which I was pushing a stroller. So that's one item of feedback that I would love to be considered for future CIPs. The other item we discussed about a month ago, the current coastal trail along Lindemar Beach is not continuous and not entirely ADA compliant, and with a former project, we talked about not being able to add a small segment of improvement with that project because it was on city property, and instead it was going to be added to the capital improvement program, but I didn't see that. Is, is that included somewhere in one of these CIP items?
You're talking about by Taco Bell, right?
Yep.
Great.
So I haven't myself heard of this request yet. You know, we do the CIPs every year, and so for the next one, I've made a note here that we can look into getting it onto the report for the next upcoming year. And then, so, yeah, I mean, I'm making notes of this, as well as your Lindemar and Oddstead intersection improvements.
Do you have any discretionary budget? It's not a big piece.
So I think holistically, we coordinate this with the finance department every year. There's requests that comes in from every single department, and, you know, this will have to be a discussion with finance on which ones can be approved.
And I guess it's, I mean, from my perspective, it's not a question of budget in getting in the CIP, because not everything has, we have a very long CIP list, and a lot of these items have been on here for, since before I was on Planning Commission. It's more that it's an improvement that needs to be documented somewhere, but it's never been documented anywhere, and it's just kind of pushed around, and so in my opinion, it's never going to get improved. Is it possible to either add that to this program or make it a clear clarification of an already existing item here? Because I know there's trail improvements, and I know there's a lot of grants available for coastal access, pedestrian access, trail improvements, and there's funds that the city has planned for allocation for future development that will get contributed to that. Can this segment of improvement just be included in one of the aspects that are already planned for?
So I, I will look into adding this into the upcoming report. At the very least, we will get it in there as a project, and it will be in the forecasted year, so it can be on the lookout, and we can have it as a discussion topic for you. I, I would have to run it by finance, along with our other projects that go with the base budget, and every single project gets looked at in terms of what, where it's getting pulled, and if it, you know, the general fund is impacted, so if it gets requested from general fund, or even any other fund, a lot of the, you know, parks, dedicated fund, all of that has been, you know, is, is getting requested on other projects already, so it would, it would have to be looked at with the other projects in the city.
I guess before, so if the answer is this will be included for next year's CIP, how does Planning Commission get to look at the CIP before it gets solidified and locked in to where we can't add anything to it? I mean, in my opinion...
Commissioner Berman, do you want to, I think what would be really helpful is if you helped clarify, like, the dimension of what we're talking about here, because Mr. Yip, you probably were not at the hearing where this came up, but I will say that Commissioner Berman has been talking about this for years, and the answer we get is the same every year, which is frustrating. And so while I can appreciate that you probably were not here for those years, it's like eight square feet of pavement.
Yeah, it's a width of five feet. I mean, it could even be four, but a width of five feet for a length of maybe eight. And it's, I mean, it's...
It's a small piece of sidewalk.
It's a small piece of sidewalk that lies in a questionable zone where no one knows if it's the Taco Bell property or city property, or, do you know where, so south of the Taco Bell is the city parking lot with the pump station right there?
Yes.
The trail traverses in front, or east of Taco Bell, but where it crosses the property line, there's no path, so it's not ADA compliant. And our, our general plan, our pedestrian and bike plan, all call for that to be a Class 1 facility and ADA compliant, but it's not. So in my opinion, I could argue that this CIP is not consistent with the general plan, because the general plan asks for improvement in that segment to be ADA compliant and a consistent Class 1 trail, but it's not.
So before Deputy Director Yip responds, I just want to remind the Planning Commission that tonight, the task before you is fairly narrow. You're being asked to look at the CIP that is before you and confirm that the projects that are identified are consistent with the general plan. As Director Murdock mentioned, the Planning Commission can certainly approve the list, but provide some comments or recommendations to the council, as this will go on to the council for... for their approval. But talking about projects that are not on the list go a bit beyond what's before you this evening. So I don't want to, I wouldn't encourage much discussion on this topic. Deputy Director Yip has heard what your request was, what your recommendation was, and he's indicated that he will continue to review that recommendation and present it to, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I believe he said he would present it to the council as well.
So I will present it to the Finance Department as we review the base budget next year on that, when they approve the new projects to be added onto the CIP list.
And just for background, we probably spent 30 minutes a month ago when we were reviewing a project at the Taco Bell, talking about this. When I say "we," it was me. And I was told that we couldn't talk about it during that meeting and that we have to talk about it during this meeting, the CIP. And now I'm being told that I'm not allowed to talk about it here either, which is just challenging for me to navigate.
Well, I think, we're not telling you not to talk about it. I think we're saying it's not the Planning Commission's role to specify the CIP. Your role is to find the projects consistent or not consistent with the general plan. That is a limitation on the Planning Commission's role. The City Council determines what the CIP will be, not the Planning Commission. What we are saying is this information can be carried forward. To the extent that we remark about the Planning Commission's action in determining general plan consistency, we can indicate that in the staff report or perhaps as a recital in the resolution that's being adopted. But we're not able to allow the Planning Commission to change the CIP or add projects to the CIP because that's not the Planning Commission's role.
When is the CIP going to City Council, Director Murdock?
It's the second meeting of June.
So the agenda tonight did not ask for designation of a liaison, but I think one is warranted. Because what I'm hearing Commissioner Berman say after years of bringing up 40 square feet of pavement for ADA compliance in our coastal zone, is that she does not necessarily find the CIP to be consistent with the general plan. And so that makes this a more difficult conversation. So perhaps what we can do to make it easier is designate a liaison to that council meeting so that this can specifically be talked about and not missed for another year. Does that sound like a fair solution?
So Commissioner Berman can certainly attend the council meeting as an individual and express her concerns to the council directly, but there's no item, there wasn't any designation of a liaison on the agenda this evening. So that happened at this meeting. I don't believe there's another planning, is there another Planning Commission before the council meeting?
I don't anticipate that we'll have another Planning Commission meeting before the City Council meeting.
Which meeting? Is it the 10th? Or is it the first, or the second?
So I think Deputy Director Yip was anticipating June 24th for the City Council meeting to consider adoption of the CIP.
Okay. I'll, I will try to attend, not as a liaison.
Clarification question, because I misunderstood this. For certifying this as consistent with the general plan, that doesn't include error by omission, strictly just what's written in the CIP?
That's correct. So thinking through the thought process of what this requirement is in state law, for instance, there's a general plan that says the city should be developed in the westward direction, and infrastructure, sewers, streets, et cetera, should be built to support that development that's anticipated. But the city puts forth a CIP that builds some road into the eastward direction, right? Not serving any development that's contemplated in the general plan. It's a very textbook, sort of simplistic example of, well, that project likely would not be consistent with the general plan. It's not relating to any sort of development or services that's contemplated. So not to determine all of the projects that would be needed to effectuate the general plan, but ensuring that the projects that are contemplated and put forth in the five-year plan are consistent with the general plan. And we've done analysis to demonstrate from staff's perspective that they are. It's a lot of repair and maintenance and sort of upkeep of existing type of infrastructure for the most part. Unfortunately, we don't have funding to do significant, robust, new infrastructure projects in most cases. But it's not determining what's missing, it's determining that what's here is not inconsistent and is consistent with the general plan. Thank you.
I tend to agree, however. This is a $1,000 project we've been talking about, and we've spent more than $1,000 worth of our time talking about it. And I'm sure you have discretionary budget. I think you see the level of passion and concern about having it not be ADA compliant on city land, and that it is a safety issue for us. And it is a compliance with the general plan issue for us. If there's any way that you could squeeze out the ability to do that tiny little bit of sidewalk, it would be greatly appreciated. And if you would, at the very least, go look at it, that would also be appreciated so that you would understand what it is that we're talking about. Sorry to put you on the spot, but it's not your fault. City Council put you there.
Deputy Director Yip, please let me know if you agree with this statement, that projects that seem simple often are not. This project does interface with private property, it may require a survey, which adds additional expense and complexity. And so there are potentially a variety of factors that could make this a much more involved and expensive project than the commission might describe it to be. However, the commission's provided pretty clear feedback to the city engineer that all reasonable efforts within his power and control should be explored to figure out the most expedient way to undertake this project, if that's something that's possible to be done.
Commissioner Radfeld.
I just noticed on packet page 192, there is an item labeled "Rockaway to Pacifica State Beach Trail Rehabilitation." And I'm just curious if that could possibly be worked into that, the item we're talking about. Finance-wise, obviously, that's always the hiccup, but I don't know what the scope of that line item is, and if that's possible to maybe incorporate that into what we're talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Refio. So if we turn to, oh, sorry, I don't have packet page. I can turn to it that quickly. But then, if we turn to the actual page that has the CIP forms, when I say the forms, you see the project and a description, the project manager, and the funding. So we have numerous projects that are like this in the CIP report. There's funding for this for a design of $50,000 and construction of $300,000, which is unfunded. It's projected for the next year's CIP. What's likely to happen is I'm going to bring this in front of Finance and ask them, do I have $50,000 for design? And we will look at it with the rest of our projects to see if we have funding. So, you know, there's a lot of projects in the report here that gets added, and it's for discussion to see when we reach that year, can we add it to the CIP? But that's all going to depend on funding from Finance, whether or not we have the money or can we get it from a grant. And this also assists us with grant applications so that we have a long list of projects here that we can go after grants for. But this project, you know, even if we could add it to, it's currently unfunded. So it's still back to the question with Finance, do we have funding for this project?
I have nothing else. Thanks, Commissioner Berman.
I have one more quick question for the city attorney. If we, if we said no, if for some reason this did not pass, and then it was to come back to us, would that, I mean, I'm not saying this is the hill to die on, but what would be the result of a no vote?
Well, the Capital Improvement Program wouldn't move on to council, and we'd need to get specific reasons from the Planning Commission as to why the projects that are identified in the CIP do not conform to the general plan. So it couldn't just be, well, we don't, we want another project that's not on the list that we do think conforms with the general plan. It would have to be that one of the projects on the list does not conform with the general plan and specific reasons why the Planning Commission believes that to be the case.
I think another potential outcome is a City Council member that wants the city to be able to carry out the CIP in an efficient way may call up the Planning Commission's action and act on the Planning Commission's behalf in their effective appellate capacity. And so I think it would be potentially additional time and staff resources committed to that extraneous process if we weren't able to find the CIP consistent with the general plan tonight.
I have a general question. Has there ever been an analysis done to how much time and effort is spent looking at projects that don't get ever designed or constructed? Because this is my sixth CIP budget, and most of the things here have been on for all of them. I was on the Library Commission for a time where I didn't, I think we just canceled every meeting for two years. That's not without effort and time done. I'm curious if some, even if it's an outside consultant, some analysis ever been done to clean up some of this CIP list? Because I would go through a handful of great projects, like the one we just approved are done every year, and then there's 50 more on here that seem to just sit there. And I'm wondering if there's an actual process for reconfirming these every year, or someone going through and saying, hey, you know, we don't actually have a real road forward for this, let's take it off.
Yeah, I think I'll start, and then please correct or supplement, Deputy Director Yip. So within the last two or three years, I believe, we've tried to streamline this process for the Planning Commission by just bringing forward new projects or changed projects so that we're not requiring the full analysis and all of the discussion and consideration by the commission of all of the projects in the CIP. So that's been one effort in recent years to try to streamline this process. I believe there's also been some effort to try to pare down some of the projects that really have no realistic expectation of ever being funded, frankly, to try to get this to be a realistic range of projects that the city might undertake. But I think there's some strategy involved with having projects in the CIP in the event that funding does become available through grants or other sources. That would be difficult for the city to pursue if projects were not in the CIP. So I understand the optics and the view of that.
There's no delineation there of like, hey, this is our, we'd love to do it, but we don't have any money. This is what we're actually going to do. There's no, there's no kind of effort given to like a priority list here. So it's, understand my frustration when we, it just feels like there's an almost at-random list of everything that somebody might have identified one time, except for anything brought up by other people. And it's just, it's just a list of a million projects that sits there every year, and I have to imagine there's staff time being done to recreate this packet every year.
Sure. That is true. I think the challenge is this is reflective in part of the city's significant capital needs, but lack of identified budget. So it's not that these projects are dreamt up, these are needs of the city where there is no steady stream of funding. And so they need to be in the Capital Improvement Program so the city can capitalize on grant funding that might be available from year to year or other opportunities to secure funding that might not be known. But if it's not in the CIP, it's much more difficult, if not impossible in many cases, for the city to capitalize on those grant opportunities.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you for that explanation.
And I would just add that the council will typically review the CIP in significant detail, and they can remove projects if they so desire, and they can also prioritize projects if they so desire.
I'd just like to add on to Director Murdock's comments, a lot of it's correct in terms of, you know, having something that's projected out here and being able to use that for grant applications, and just having something that's on the books and we're aware of a project need. I would say that, you know, in terms of the formatting of the report, there's some improvements that can be made. One is, you know, how revenue is shown on this report, and I brought this up, and, you know, when we have enough staffing, we can possibly make changes to this report and get a consultant on board. We could project it out 10 years, so it's a little bit more realistic than constantly having new projects show up the next year, which, for example, the one that was just brought up, it's, you know, it's going to be back when we project it out next year, but realistic, is this going to be there next year? If you project it out 10 years, maybe we can have some realistic timelines on terms of the projects that, you know, we can try to accomplish on a certain year. In terms of, you know, I'm trying to advocate for staffing here. So we're 25% less than, you know, a lot of the neighboring agencies around here. We probably have a staff size that, for the engineering division anyways, to be able to carry out these projects, not that much bigger than a population of maybe 5,000 or 6,000 residents. So that really limits our ability to carry out the projects, even the funding where they come in. I know that suggestions have been made in terms of can we get consultants on board, but even the ability for us to deal with staff reports, you know, and dealing with issues that come up with consultant-managed projects. And, you know, it doesn't remove all of our workload when consultants manage our projects either. So there's limitations. We do have to have a certain staff size in order to carry out the number of projects we have, and just to maintain like permitting processes and dealing with resident requests and also the private development projects that come on through. So we need a certain level of staff size just to, just to do that work that constantly comes in as well. So I would just take a chance to advocate for that because, you know, that's one thing that we need, even if we were to get the funding in place, but that's probably the first thing to look at is the funding.
Yeah, believe me, we hear you. We hear that all the time.
Thank you.
One quick question on that same page 192. There's, to go off Commissioners Ferguson's question, Rockaway Beach parking structure. It's my recollection that several years ago, that was discussed and actually removed from the CIP list. Clearly, it's still on there. Is that, again, to speak to kind of one of your things, if it's in there as a want, that could work, obviously, towards, you know, the future to have it in the CIP. Clearly, it's unfunded, and it's been unfunded for as long as I can remember, many, many years. Would that go with that particular item?
Right. So I think that's an interesting example where the city for many years has recognized a desire to construct a parking structure in Rockaway Beach to support, you know, the long-term objectives as a visitor destination and shopping destination and so forth. Interestingly, right, having this in the CIP is one important factor to support the city's effort a few years ago to update the in-lug parking fee. So it went from a $3,000 per parking space fee that had been in place for many years to something upwards of $40,000 justified per space. And that was justified in part by recognizing the city plans and desires to have a parking structure, which is a much more expensive method of providing off-street parking in space-constrained locations, for example, like Rockaway Beach. So the pieces fit together, it's just the time horizon and the vision needs to be there, and those don't always align in the way that we would desire to effectuate projects in a near-term basis. But without the planning, without the inclusion in the Capital Improvement Program, you don't really get past go in terms of planning and seeking funding for these kinds of projects.
I think that's it for deliberation, because I'm not seeing anyone else with something to say. You know, I think that there have been a lot of good conversations. I kind of understand where everybody sits on this. I think it's unfortunate that we can't designate a liaison, because I think that the whole commission seems to be in agreement over this item, and I think that we would unanimously designate Commissioner Berman. So, I mean, I, I wonder, I'm going to re-ask it, but I wonder if we could vote to approve or vote to recommend the CIP's consistency with the general plan and then figure out if there's a way to have Commissioner Berman there as a liaison rather than as a member of the public, which seems like kind of a waste.
So, so there wasn't any liaison appointment on the agenda this evening, and there's no meeting before the next June council meeting where the CIP is going to be presented to the council. As I mentioned, there's nothing that prohibits Commissioner Berman from attending the council meeting and speaking as an individual. The same would be true for...
Anybody on the commission.
Commissioner Wright.
I only ask Ms. Pizzano because we have in the past had, I mean, like, very often, we've had a designation of liaison on the agenda, like we have tonight, and it says "none," and then we double-check, and sometimes it changes and sometimes it doesn't. So...
So, I mean, I just want everybody to be happy.
Yeah, so I don't, I can't speak to that, but you've already passed that item on the agenda, and you said there was no, there was no need for appointment of a designated liaison.
That's true. Okay.
Is it a Brown Act violation if we all email from our planning commission email address to each and every city council person saying that we would really like to see this thing?
Sure, you can all individually email a council member of your choosing, so long as you don't copy each other and express your opinion or concerns about it. That's not, that's not a Brown Act violation.
Thank you.
I really appreciate everyone's suggestions and the support that I feel on something that I was passionate about before coming on Planning Commission. I plan on attending the council meeting, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Chair, I just want to bring up one other option I mentioned earlier.
Sure.
It's a short resolution in the packet. The council tends to read the information carefully. The commission could add a recital with its motion related to encouraging the city council to consider a project at the first opportunity to close the coastal trail gap south of Taco Bell along Lindemar State Beach. It may hold some weight as an official action of the commission, even though the commission can't actually add it to the CIP. It's one other option.
That's true. There's only two recitals.
So I don't think it'll get lost on, you know, page 17 of 49 in a typical resolution that you would see.
I think that's a really good idea, Director Murdock. What does everybody think?
I like it. Yeah, that's really creative. How would you suggest we form a motion that recommends that?
Well, I would just recommend the motion that's suggested in the packet, you know, with the addition of a recital to encourage the city council to consider a project at the first opportunity to close the coastal trail pavement gap that exists south of Taco Bell along Lindemar State Beach.
And then I guess would staff draft up that recital? Or?
Well, we're reading it in substantially the same form as it would be, but I'll defer to the Assistant City Attorney.
Yes, so staff can, you can give direction to staff to prepare a recital along the lines that Director Murdock mentioned, or you can craft it yourselves right now to state whatever you want to state. I don't, I think the point is pretty clear, so I don't feel a need to craft it ourselves.
I do think it's important, though, to mention how small a piece this is. It's not a big ask. And that's a lot of the reason that it keeps slipping through the cracks, is because it's such a small thing that it doesn't, it doesn't make it any less important. But it's so small that it gets forgotten very easily. So I think we ought to include something that the scope is very, very small.
Maybe approximate square footage.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I said maybe an approximate square footage.
Okay. And I think maybe some remark that, you know, this is designated as an important accessible trail in the general plan, something along those lines, to relate it to your task this evening, which is related to CIP consistency with the general plan and not just, you know, a wish list of nice things in the community.
I super-support staff. I really appreciate staff support on this.
Yeah.
That makes it feel all that much better.
No, that's, I mean, really appreciate you, Christian. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking for the motion.
It's on, oh gosh, my packet pages are off this evening.
Page 177.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I move that the planning commission adopts the resolution included in Attachment A, finding that the proposed 2024-2029 capital improvement program is consistent with the 2040 general plan, and asks that staff develop a recital that requests council to consider improvement of the coastal trail along Lindemar Beach that closes the small gap of approximately X square feet of sidewalk improvement.
As the trail is identified as a key
Right.
infrastructure in the general plan.
As this trail is identified as a key trail and accessible access, coastal access in the general plan. Thank you.
Second.
Sure about?
And that motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to commission communications. Does anyone, it would be wonderful if someone who attended the committee and commission presentations could report on that?
Yeah. So Commissioner Godwin and I presented to the city council our annual report. We went first, which was great. And council was just in awe with how much work we've done, not only this year, but the past couple of years. And they are so appreciative of how much detail, how close we look at the details of each item before us and all of the considerations that we give, and just our connection with the public and really listening to the public's input.
I'd just like to add one comment. The thing that struck me that wasn't brought up was they had indicated how different our last couple of years had been and how much more rigorous and how much more just volume of work that needed to be done, and they were quite appreciative that people stepped up and did that and didn't just let it go.
Well, thank you both for attending. And speaking of rigors, I know that it's hard to, you know, like, present in the middle of the work week another presentation, so thank you for representing us. Okay, so I am going to just say I want to thank Christian for hanging out with us for the last however many years. I think this is probably our last commission meeting with you. Like, you will be so heartily missed, and we really, really appreciate you, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair Houser.
Ditto to that, and I just want to thank you for how much knowledge you brought, bring, brought to the city, and I have learned so much from you, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman.
As have I, and it's certainly given me a lot more confidence at doing this job with, you know, clear-eyed view.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin.
Yes, I think we need to get a shock collar on you to keep you within Pacifica's city limits, but congratulations, we're going to miss you greatly. You've been fantastic.
Thank you, Commissioner Refio.
Christian, I'm very happy for you for your future. I'm very sad for Pacifica. You have brought a level of professionalism and an expectation that's going to be hard for anybody to fill those shoes, not just from the work that you've done and the amount of care and the balancing of all the different pressures and concerns that so many people just aren't aware of. And just like tonight is a perfect example about a little piece of concrete, you figured out a way to get the message across for us, and you do that and have done that for years for all of us, and it's greatly appreciated. And it's not just that. I know because I hear, because I frankly ask, but your staff also respects the heck out of you. And I've watched as you've been doing your thing, and we will be very lucky if we get somebody that does half as good a job as what you've done. Thank you so much for all you've done. But Christian isn't the only one that's leaving us this evening. I believe that we are losing Shereah and Joey as well. This is our PCT. The people are also going to be ending their internship tonight. And how much I've appreciated them being here, I mean, you know, kind of like with the water department where, you know, you never hear any complaints because the water always turns on when you turn on the faucet. The same thing with these guys. They're there for us every meeting. I just wanted to put out a heartfelt thanks to them for all their hard work while they were here. I wish them nothing but the best in the future. Thank you so much.
I don't want to be the only commissioner not to thank Christian for her service. No, it's been quite an education, and I think public servants like you are hard to find, and you'll be certainly missed. No one begrudges you for your career move. I think it's great and well-deserved, but, you know, it's going to be hard to find a replacement for you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ferguson, and thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Okay. Stop communications.
Well, you know, it's been said that sometimes your thunder is stolen, and so was mine this evening. But as you mentioned, tonight's my last meeting with the planning commission. My last day in Pacifica is this Wednesday, June 5. I worked with the city for 10 years, and it's been an incredible journey, I'll put it that way. Many, many late nights in these council chambers that looked very different when I started here 10 years ago. The orange hue, I think, will be forever burned into my retinas from the carpet and the wood paneling and the like. But I've enjoyed those evenings and the many other hours on weekends, phone conversations, Zoom during the pandemic, and elsewhere, getting to know so many of you and your predecessors. I've come to learn so much more about the pressures that you face and the sacrifices you make to serve your community, and I'm really in awe of how much care you show and express for the work that you do, and you don't even get paid for it. You do it because you love the community, and you do it because it's the right thing to do, to give back. And I'm just really humbled by that and have appreciated the opportunity in various capacities over the years as my role has changed to support all of you and try to get you where you wanted to go and where you believe the community needed to go. Even when it didn't always align with my professional judgment in all cases, that's the beauty of our process, that there's staff to provide insight and advice and ultimately options for you. And so this has really been an interesting testing ground for me to hone my craft as well, to figure out, well, maybe I didn't think of that and wouldn't have recommended that, but that's where the commission wants to go, and I'm going to do my level best to get you there. And I think there's been a lot of opportunities to do that over the years. But even as I'm leaving, I want to thank you all for the trust that you've shown and expressed and invested in me. But let you know that while I'll be gone, you'll be in good hands with the capable staff that I've had the pleasure of assembling here over the last couple of years in the planning department and also the excellent staff in the city attorney's office that will make sure the good work you've done continues into the future. But thank you all so much for the opportunities and the memories.
Thanks, Christian. Okay. Does someone want to make a motion for adjournment?
If we don't adjourn, we get to keep them.
All right.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
That motion passes with five in favor and one opposed.
Wow. That's a first.